At this time, we'll call the June 5th, 2017 Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I will handle the invocation and Commissioner Jeff Peel will do the pledge allegiance. So if you'd please stand.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and all the blessings you bestow upon us. Lord, we ask you for guidance and wisdom as we make decisions for our county and for our citizens. Lord, we ask you to remember those that put themselves at risk, our emergency personnel, our police, our sheriff, and our highway patrol. Please put a hedge around them and keep them safe. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon us. We thank you for this reign. Lord, we are just so humbled by what you do for us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in pledge allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have some special recognitions. So first, I would like to recognize Dr. Jeff Peel.
It's not every day that you have the honor to do what I'm about to do and give a key to the county to a former colleague and a great friend, but having the pleasure of working with Linda Graham for several years. She is very worthy, and the Alexander County Board of Commissioners bestows this key to the county upon Linda Graham in recognition of nine years of dedicated service as Executive Director of the CBCC Alexander Center presented June 5th, 2017. And I would like to remind her that, as Jack Coke once told me, that retirement is like Christmas because on the 25th of every month, you get a check.
I'd ask Ms. Graham and her family to maybe join her. Dale, you guys?
Aww.
Dale.
I said, "I love Christmas."
Hey Dale, you want to join Linda for the photo? Your family there?
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Ryan Mayberry, if you'd like to handle the next one, please.
And we've got several presentations tonight, and I'm lucky enough to give this one to a friend of mine, and I'm going to read it to you. It says, "The Alexander County Board of Commissioners bestows this key to the county upon Captain Michael D. Harrison in recognition of 20 years of dedicated service with the Alexander County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center presented June 5th, 2017." Mike, come up just for a minute, please. There you are. He's always in the back, and so I immediately looked back there for him because a lot of you guys, if you've never been here before, Mike spends a lot of time back there in the back protecting you, the public, and us, the commissioners, up here. So, you know, we've had some contentious issues in the past, and there's been some things said by some people that, you know, you need protection here. You've got to make sure that these public meetings, that everyone's safe. And Mike has spent a lot of time here protecting us, the public and the commissioners. And he's spent a lot of time at the Alexander County Sheriff's Department. And I guess, how long have you been in law enforcement total?
as he said, I've spent a lot of time, probably other than commissioners, about as much
You told me, but I...
Since 1981. time as anybody at commissioners' meetings, I think. Thirty-six years.
Thirty-six years?
And I would like to say that this is very special to receive a key to Alexander County, Yes.
Okay, thirty-six years.
but it's extra special for me to receive it from this board, this group, because the
And I know it's probably a hard day, your last day, but we appreciate very much, and
guys sitting in this seat, in these seats, have done an impressive job as any board
I appreciate everything you've done for us.
that we've had in a lot of years, and I say that in all sincerity.
And he's not just a... I like to call Mike my friend. We spend a lot of time talking.
And I've been here enough to know how hot those seats get, and I appreciate your service
He's a good guy. I tell him that. We're losing a really, really great law enforcement officer, but he'll be around.
to the county as well, and we will be fortunate and blessed to keep you for a long time. Thank you, Ryan.
Come up here and take a picture.
I really should recognize another one. It seems like a lot of them's checking out on us here tonight, and... But I'm sure, you know, we have a good group of young people who are coming up, and we've said it here before as a Board of Commissioners, it's a good time for, you know, for the young people to be involved in all aspects, whether it be law enforcement, you know, the offices that are, you know, being run forward. We just need to, you know, have some young blood in things, and... But we need some people who've been around and know the ropes also. But I want to recognize Lieutenant Allen Van Story at this time. It says, "The Alexander County Board of Commissioners bestows this key to the county upon Lieutenant Allen Van Story in recognition of 30 years of dedicated service with the Alexander County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center presented June 5th, 2017." And... Reiterate everything Mike said. I'm very, very proud and very blessed to know every one of you, and the job, you know, I don't envy any of y'all's jobs. And I want to thank Alexander County for letting me have a job for the last 30 years, and this county's been very, very good to my family. We've been very blessed. We've, you know, this county's very good about allowing its workers and stuff to pursue other interests as far as... You're not going to work for any form of government without having the heart of, you know, wanting to volunteer and wanting to serve your community. And this county's been very good about letting... Pursue other interests and allowing us to do that, having time off, and just being supportive and everything, and really looking after the citizens that, you know, we all have sworn to serve and protect. And I just want to thank y'all for everything that y'all have done for my family.
Thank you. Thank you. But you guys, those are a lot of young people that seem to be retiring, so I think everybody up here is envious. So congratulations, and I hope you enjoy your time with your families and whatever interests that you decide to pursue. You will be missed, all of you. At this time, we have commissioners' reports. Any commissioner has anything?
Chairman Campbell, I'd like to report that the memorial service was a fantastic service that we had Memorial Day Sunday at the courthouse and had the pleasure and the honor of recognizing seven fallen heroes, as well as recognizing Mrs. Daniels for her lifelong dedication and service to our county. You know, men and women like them, and obviously with Sheriff Beber, who also had the ultimate sacrifice for us as well. And then you see guys like Mike and Allen here, and the men and women that they served with that put it on every day, never know for sure if they're going to come home at night or not. I've had some contentious situations in my job before, but never one where I was threatened to be shot. So I appreciate all of our people who protect us and serve us and are there for us at all hours of the day and night, and it's been a pretty humbling experience for me, especially sitting through the ceremony last week, but I appreciate all of you.
Mr. Chairman, just like to give another credit to you and to the ones who put up with the committee that was involved in the naming of Sheriff Beber, was able to attend that on Friday afternoon along with some other commissioners, and it was a real great thing. It was a moving experience. I could tell the family, you know, were really appreciative of that, and, you know, and as it's been said before, there's not much more sacrifice you can give than to give your life. And on another note, I was able to attend... Stony Point had their 60-year anniversary on Saturday. Was able to attend that, and they're kind of in a unique situation. They have Aridale County and Alexander County that they answer calls for, and the place there, they run a pretty tight ship. They're totally out of debt with all their building, all their equipment, you know, and things like that. So appreciate those guys, and, you know, that's one thing, we're doing budget, but we can't really put money back in your pocket, but the fire department can with their ISO ratings, with your insurance premium. The better their rating is, the cheaper your coverage is going to be. So, you know, we want to make sure that those guys are, you know, getting the training, doing what they do, and I thank all of our fire departments in Alexander County, our EMS, all of them for the great job they do. It was a pretty good storm yesterday down by my house. Maybe no one else had one, but... And it wasn't but just a couple minutes. You had the power company was out there. I saw the sheriff, first responders, you know, things were being taken care of. So when we don't want to get out in things, they're out there on the forefront. So I thank each one of them. Appreciate it.
In regards to the Thomas Beber memorial naming of the Law Enforcement Center, you know, it was kind of interesting that he is recognized previously at a national level, and it's only fitting that we recognize him locally where he made the sacrifice. And I'll be honest, of all things in the last two and a half years, that's probably the thing that I will remember the most during this tenure. And I think I'm most proud of that that should have been done, now it has been done. And, you know, I think for the rest of my life, I think that'll be one thing I'll always remember and cherish fondly to be a part of that, so.
Yeah, I'll say one thing, too. Our law enforcement officers, we all know that they put themselves in danger, and we appreciate that. You guys do it for us, you do it for your families, but it's not just the officers themselves that make that sacrifice, it's their families, it's their children, their wives, their moms and their dads, and we need to remember all those people and thank them all because, you know, anytime an officer goes out, they don't know when they're coming back, and their family doesn't either. So we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, since everybody else said something, I feel like I need to, too. Don't want to be left out. No, I've said this many times, and I think, I don't know if I've said it from this position or not, but I'm not man enough to be in law enforcement or the military because it would... I would have to be paid a lot to have to put on a bulletproof vest to go to work. And when I say a lot, I mean a lot. And so I have always had a great respect for anybody that has to wear a bulletproof vest to work and/or a helmet, you know, military wearing helmets and... Because that's... It takes a special person to be willing to do that, and I am, you know, trying to teach my children to respect as well as appreciate the folks that protect us every day and get to deal with the, I guess you'd say, least appealing portion of the public, you know, and their daily jobs. Kind of flipping the switch, one thing I wanted to share, and I am the delegate to the Western Piedmont Council of Government's Policy Board for our commission, and got an email today and just wanted to share that our... We are in a cooperative region with, it's Alexander, Catawba, Caldwell, and Burke Counties. And basically, the Western Piedmont Council of Government serves our four county area and the municipalities inside that four county area as well. And the Executive Director of the Western Piedmont Council of Government just sent out a little email today that they had gotten information that the unemployment rate in our area is below 4% for the first time since the year 2000. So...
That's a problem.
That's good, and I may be... I don't think there was any... I won't get in trouble, but, you know, they're going to do a press release next week, but you heard it here first. Where's Rick when you need him? But I just thought that was a great, great little bit of news. Alexander County is, you know, I don't want to say we're on the way up, but I think we are, as are the counties around us, and we should take advantage and also be proud.
All right, does anybody else? Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay. Our first order of business is public hearing rezoning case 17-1. At this time, I entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Make a motion to...
Oh, you entertain a motion.
You are going. Okay, second.
No, he's... I misunderstood him. He said, "I entertain a motion."
Oh, okay. Make a motion, we go into public hearing as stated by our chairman. Second.
Okay. Any discussion about the motion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed likewise? Okay, John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I got here just in the nick of time, and I apologize, I was running behind from another meeting. Tonight, you have a rezoning request for property located on Highway 127 North. It doesn't have a specific address. It is due south of the Telephone Exchange Road. The property is owned by Mr. Cecil J. Sigmund and heirs. They are applying or requesting to rezone this property from its current RA-20 Residential Zoning District to HC, which is Highway Commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on Thursday, June 1st, and unanimously recommended that the property be rezoned from RA-20 to Highway Commercial, noting that it was consistent with the 2008 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, which noted that this area would be better suited for commercial use as well as development, expected development along US Highway, or not, excuse me, NC Highway 127 in the Bethlehem Community. No one was present at that public hearing to speak for or against a proposed rezoning. Members of the Sigmund family were there. I think it was all four of the daughters. And actually, and the property owner south of this, and I don't want to say the name because I may not be remembering it right, she had actually contacted me wanting to know if she could tie onto this rezoning, but when she did contact me, it was too late in the process to have it because it had already been published in the newspaper and the notices had been sent out, and I let her know that she could apply at a later date. So I have not heard from her since, but so there was some interest there, which would essentially make all of that area in there commercial zoning. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
So any questions? Any questions from anybody in attendance? It's a public hearing. Okay. Make a motion to close the public.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Any discussion about closing the public hearing on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed likewise? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning case 17-1 due to the following. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the future land use patterns in the county's 2008 Comprehensive Plan, and the rezoning is consistent with land development patterns along North Carolina Highway 127. I think that covers the reasons, and I'll make that in form of a motion.
Okay, Jim, we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion? Any?
Mr. Chairman, I mean, this is not a question, but I'd just like to say again, I think we need to look at some of the zoning restriction, some of the zoning... We need to go back and revisit zoning. We need to go back and look at some of the zoning particulars from one zoning class to the next before the end of time.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay.
Thank you. I'll add to that, Commissioner Lell. At your June 19th meeting, there is a public hearing scheduled for the new updated zoning ordinance, which will be combining the town and the county zoning into one ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing at their June meeting and was unanimous in their recommendation, and I'll be taking that to the Taylorsville Town Council as well, so that they'll be adopting it. Those things will go into effect July 1st, if adopted, and at that point, I think, is where we can really sit down and look at it, so we kind of got everything in one place.
Well, I think what Commissioner Lell's saying is that last countywide zoning ordinance that was done together was 2000, I believe.
Yeah, '01, I believe.
Is it '01? '01? So 2001, so it's been 16 years. Things have changed in Alexander County. A lot of the infrastructure's changed, transportation's changed, so we need to go back and instead of the property owners coming and, you know, requesting that we rezone these properties, we need to look at what needs to be Highway Commercial anyway. So we need to go back and look at that.
Proactively look at that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, a public hearing, proposed economic development spending for year 2017, 2018. Entertain a motion to go into public hearing for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into public hearing to discuss funding for the Alexander County Economic Development Corporation.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. Mr. Eisenhour?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, this public hearing is intended to help keep the county in compliant with General Statute 158-7.1, which covers how the county can spend funds for economic development. As a quick history note, I guess, prior to last year, this statute only required public hearings in really two specific instances. One, if you were providing incentives directly to a company, or if you were buying or selling property. And that was the two main reasons you would conduct a public hearing for economic development purposes. As I said about a year ago, there was a slight change in the wording in the bill, in the statute, which has been interpreted to mean that we need to have a broader definition of economic development spending and when we have public hearings. So in consultation with the county attorney, we have identified some areas where we believe that meet the definition of the statute. Now, let me also say, there's areas where you don't have to have a public hearing. County funds can be used for things like the operation of the office, utility payments, pens and pencils, paper, that kind of thing, and you do not have to have a public hearing, obviously, for those kind of things. You also do not have to have a public hearing for something that's on a recurring basis that you've already had a public hearing for. So for example, if we've had a public hearing in the past for a company incentives, then we don't have to do that every year. Once is enough. So in that vein, the things that we're talking about tonight are basically things that are somewhat recurring, but you have not had a public hearing, and they are, they fall in, under that undefined term, economic development. So I have these listed for you. We have determined they're basically six areas which we think need to fall under this public hearing. I'm going to hit those quickly for you, and of course, I'll be available to answer any questions once I get through this list. We have $10,000 funded for marketing and advertising. Again, this is general promotion of Alexander County. We use this for things like to buy a local program and of course, to advertise sites in Alexander County that are ready for development. The EDC, for several years, has had a small website grant program, and we fund that at $5,000, and this is to assist local businesses that do not have a web presence. And of course, we all know in this day, you really need a website if you're going to operate a business. Over the years, we've awarded 22 of these grants to local businesses to help start websites. We also have a building renovation program. This one, we asked to fund at $10,000. We provide up to $2,500 to a local business that wants to make improvements. It can be external or internal to the building, but our idea is just to help the businesses help themselves, and this is a matching grant, so we just don't hand it out $2,500. The business has to spend $5,000 in order to get the $2,500. And over the last year, we've done three of these, actually. We have $11,250 in annual dues to the Charlotte Regional Partnership. Again, this could be considered as supplemental marketing and advertising for the county. The partnership represents 14 counties in North Carolina and actually 12 in, excuse me, back up, 12 in North Carolina, four in South Carolina. And so what the partnership does is they're kind of our marketing arm. They represent us when they take trips all across the world. They bring us prospects to view our, view sites, much in the same manner as, say, the Department of Commerce does. We have $25,000 funding for... questions once I get through this list. We have $10,000 funded for marketing and advertising. Again, this is general promotion of Alexander County. We use this for things like the bi-local program, and of course, to advertise sites in Alexander County that are ready for development. The EDC, for several years, has had a small website grant program, and we fund that at $5,000. And this is to assist local businesses that do not have a web presence. And of course, we all know in this day, you really need a website if you're going to operate a business. Over the years, we've awarded 22 of these grants to local businesses to help start websites. We also have a building renovation program. This one we asked to fund at $10,000. We provide up to $2,500 to a local business that wants to make improvements. It can be external or internal to the building, but our idea is just to help the businesses help themselves, and this is a matching grant. So we just don't hand it out $2,500. The business has to spend $5,000 in order to get the $2,500. And over the last year, we've done three of these, actually. We have $11,250 in annual dues to the Charlotte Regional Partnership. Again, this could be considered as supplemental marketing and advertising for the county. The partnership represents 14 counties in North Carolina, and actually, 12 in, excuse me, back up, 12 in North Carolina, four in South Carolina. And so what the partnership does is they're kind of our marketing arm. They represent us when they take trips all across the world. They bring us prospects to view our, view sites, much in the same manner as, say, the Department of Commerce does. We have $25,000 funding for payment of a zero-interest loan to Energy United. This is a repayment of funds for grading at the White Plains site. And then the last one, and the big one, is $150,000 in funding to support cost of developing a new shale building in Alexander County. And I think the last week's announcement that Borealis Compounds Incorporated purchased the only, excuse me, the only shale building in Alexander County, and of course, investing $15 million and creating 37 new jobs. I think that helps to highlight the need that we need to make efforts to develop another shale building, and I would propose that these funds be dedicated to that effort, as if you want to call it seed money for the next shale building, that would be an appropriate way to clarify that. Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to answer any questions that any of you may have about any of these recommendations.
In regard to the shale building, had we not had that, we would not have landed that company. Is that correct? They would not have waited for us to construct one?
No, they would not have.
Or the railroad to construct one?
No, they would not have. Company officials actually made the comment that the shale building being there was a critical factor in their deciding on Alexander County, because as I think they said during their presentation here, it indicated that we were serious about economic development.
David?
I believe we have a, I'm on the EDC board as well, and I believe we have a meeting June 23rd, whatever day it is. Will you get, will you bring a list of the website grant programs? I'd like to know.
I will.
Who's gotten those grants and how they're doing with it?
Certainly.
And I'll say something about the shale building as well. There were several comments that the representatives from Borealis made that really stuck with me, and one of those was, we had a ready-built site, and also the educational aspect of it. The training center that we have here, even though it's not set up for anything that they're going to be doing currently, they know that we're serious about economic development in Alexander County, and we're pushing in that direction. And they know that, you know, as far as a manufacturer goes, in Alexander County, that the EDC, the community, the educational community, the Board of Commissioners, we want to be a partner with them and make things work, and I think that was some of the comments that, you know, really stuck with me.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, can I point out one thing out?
Yes, sir.
The $150,000 funding to support the cost for developing a new shale building is not in the budget, so we'd have to add those funds into the budget.
Okay.
I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Noted.
Mr. Chairman, one question.
Sorry about that. They got smart and put me in between two microphones, so there's not one right here. That, I mean, that amount of money, I mean, that is, there's no, I'm going to say this, that money is not guaranteed to be spent, even if there is a new shale building project. I mean, you know, it may be a portion of that.
Correct.
I mean, you know, it's not that we're saying, I mean, it's not that we're saying, okay, we're going to write a $150,000 check.
Correct.
That's to, you know, that's, or at least that was the way the first shale building that was successful, we, you know, we basically said, we will commit to do this, and it was worst case, worst case, we're going to be here, but obviously, the first one went very well, and we didn't get anywhere close to a worst-case scenario where we were paying utilities and things like that. So that's, I guess that's, that was a question, but also a statement, if that is correct.
Site ready, what, how much do we have down there that's quote-unquote, ready to go vertical construction?
Are you talking about, are you talking about on the White Plains site?
The White Plains site.
It's, it's 25 acres.
But I mean, is it all pretty much, we could go vertical on at any point in time?
Yes.
So really, the $150,000 is a threshold. There'll be grants and things, I guess, if there's something available, just like before, that we pursue to go on the other side of it. And that's what we would max, maybe.
This, this is just the start to do, I'm going to let you explain that, because there's not a plan to put a building there yet, put it that way.
David, what would, just, I wasn't here for the last time. What kind of things would that $150,000 be used for? Just, I'm not, I don't think it's a bad thing, I just don't know what you're talking about.
Good question.
Potentially, and I think if, in my mind, our first target should be getting a shale building on the White Plains site. It's, it is graded, it's ready. Just because it's graded, but that doesn't mean, I mean, there would be additional grading. So I would see using those funds potentially to help get a rail spur to the site, because I think, again, the thing that the Borealis announcement showed to us is the importance of a shale building, but emphasizing the importance of a shale building with rail. That put us in a completely different category in the state of North Carolina in terms of product. So if we can replicate that with a shale building, again, that has rail service, that is certainly, again, that is the way to do it, if at all possible. So I, again, I would see that $150 being used potentially to secure the rail service to a site.
Maybe some minor site work and then rail service.
Certainly.
Thanks.
That's good. Thank you. Okay, it's a public hearing. Any questions from anyone in the audience concerning this matter?
Or any of the other matters that Mr. Eisenhower mentioned.
Hearing none, now entertain a motion to close the public hearing for economic development spending for years 2017 and 18.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. Okay, at this time, Linda Graham, you're not going to get out of here with seven to...
Wait a second. Do we need to, do we need to accept anything? We're good? All right. We're good. All right. I wasn't sure. We had to accept the report.
Okay. I'll recognize Linda Graham in one of her final presentations, so.
Yeah.
And Dr. Keith Mackey, CVCC Executive Vice President, and Dean Gary Muller. Is that correct for pronunciation?
That's right.
All right.
Thank you, Chairman Campbell, Commissioners, County Manager French, and Madam Clerk. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to provide you with an update of the programs currently offered in the newly established CVCC Alexander Applied Technology Center. And what a nice ring that has to it, doesn't it? But first, I'd like to share with you my thanks and gratitude to each one of you and to the commission that came before you over the past nine years, since I began my position as Executive Director for CVCC in Alexander County, as I prepare for a new chapter in my life called retirement. I'm not sure what that means yet, but I'll let you all know as soon as I figure it out. But I shared with the Board of Trustees recently that when I was growing up on a tobacco field many years ago, I thought that the only job that required you to get your hands dirty was that of working in tobacco. But over the last nine years, however, and thanks to your leadership and your vision over the last nine years, many of us have gotten our hands dirty, rolled up our sleeves, and worked tirelessly together to take education to a new level in Alexander County. As a matter of fact, and I don't mean to throw you under the bus, because this is a compliment, Commissioner Mayberry, but nine years ago, when I took this job, Commissioner Mayberry came to me, and we sat down, we had a great conversation, and he said, Linda, what can we do in Alexander County to raise the bar in education in this community for our citizens? What can we do to provide the training, the technology, and the education that our citizens deserve? Do you remember that conversation?
I do.
And we've still had them again today. All of you looking at this commission board and the ones prior, you particularly have had lots of skin in the game when it comes to CVCC in Alexander County. You've had children that duly enrolled, you know? You're either on the commission board where you're faced with those educational questions about how can we move that needle forward? We've got administrators who have walked the walk and talked the talk when it came to assisting high school students with planning for their futures, right, Dr. Peel? So we're moving in the right direction, and I appreciate your leadership in making sure that happens, because we don't want to be second to any community, because our citizens deserve it. And it's not easy decisions to make, but you've made them. As a matter of fact, after we've talked, and we talked about the vision, we continue to talk about job skills training that affects our citizens, not just for jobs today, but for the job market tomorrow. And that's where you guys have been leaders in looking down the road through your lens of vision. But we've developed, and what's been exciting to me, is to see the partnerships that I've been blessed to be a part in this community. Partnerships such as our business community, haven't they shown up in full force? Partners such as Craftmaster Furniture, Mitchell Gold Bob Williams, Taylor King, Lazy Boy Furniture, the list goes on and on. We have 12 furniture sponsors in this community that have said, we support the endeavors of providing jobs for our furniture industry that years ago, we thought was dying out, it's not dying out. It's here to stay for a long time, and you've made sure that we're providing skilled workers to do that. But these partnerships wouldn't have, and our facilities and our programs wouldn't have been possible without the support from Dr. Jennifer Hefner and the leadership she has provided our community and continues to provide our community for our young people, because they have bought into education, and she's helped pave that way for them. The County School Board, the Board of Education, Economic Development under the leadership of David Eisenhower and Gary Herman, administrators locally, such as Doug Roney, Principal at the high school, Susan Gant, CTE Coordinator. You think she's interested in job training? You better believe it. And we want our young people to stay here, don't we? So these partnerships are critical. The counselors at Alexander Central High School have been vital. County Engineer Darrell Robertson, CVCC Advisory Board, which is now business-led. Business leaders lead our initiatives and help setting our goals. The town of Taylorsville's been a part, our community leaders, CVCC Administration, who's with us today, and the fine staff right here. When you walk in the door, you'll see smiling faces welcoming everybody that walks through that door, and that's CVCC in this community, and we expect none than the best customer service. But through your efforts and this commission's efforts, we now have a 37,000-square-foot facility that is fully operational. And guess what? We're running out of room. That's a good problem. That's where we're getting our hands dirty. We don't always agree, but we're going to get our hands dirty, and we're going to get the job done. And thanks to your leadership and determination, that's going to happen. So I thank each one of you, and like I told Mr. French recently, I'm retiring, I'm not dying, I hope, not until my time comes. I'm not moving, but my plan is to spend more quality time with my loving husband and my family. They're going to be off at college, but I might just have to go visit them. A surprise visit might be nice. And with Matthew in Wilmington and Lawrence at Chapel Hill, that would be lovely. And my, I truly plan to spend more time with my 83-year-old mother, who lives five hours away in Jacksonville, North Carolina, and for years, she has worked tirelessly on that tobacco farm. She's retired now, obviously, and my dad's deceased, but now it's my time to show her just how much I appreciate her and love her, and maybe she can enjoy the fruits of her labor together, too. So tonight, with all that said, we're here to provide an update of some of the exciting things that you helped create many years ago, and now it's living proof of the good things that are happening at CVCC for the citizens of Alexander County. Dr. Keith Mackey and Dean Muller.
Thank you, Linda.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, on behalf of Dr. Henshaw and her faculty and staff, I first like to thank you for the support that Linda just referred to, and also appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to just update you on the progress of our programming here in the county. The Alexander Applied Technologies Building, of course, right across the parking lot, is complete, other than what I call a punch list. I don't think that's the official term, but we just have a few minor things that are being corrected. But we've been teaching furniture classes in the new facility since last summer, and we begin welding and early college classes during the fall of 2016. So it is fully operational. And sort of following what Linda was saying, the new building, it's really a testament to great partnerships and working together as a community for our community. The building would not have been possible without your investment and your vision. And the building's completion has involved you, our Board of Commissioners, our other Alexander County agencies, our public school partners, business and industry, the college, and also several local, regional, and federal grants were garnered for the project. It's been a very complete, complex project, but everyone's worked together to make it a reality. And I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Rick French and also Mr. Darrell Robertson for their oversight and management of a very complex project that had a lot of moving parts. In regards to our high school program, this will be the third year of our high school cohort classes. We started those years, the first cohort was here in Alexander County, and they've spread now to Catawba as well. The college classes for high school students are referred to as career and college promise classes, and we call that CCP. Education is the king of acronyms, so if you hear CCP or career and college promise, that means high school students who are taking college classes. The CCP umbrella covers our cohort and also our early college programs, and these programs are offered to students, college courses, college credit, tuition-free. So just to give you what that means, over the last two years, you have saved, through your support of our college programming, $64,000 in higher education tuition expenses if a student attended CVCC as an adult, $64,000. The credits gained will save them also at state schools when they transfer. For example, transferring these courses, which are tuition-free to Appalachian State, will save families $154,000, if we include all the students who are currently enrolled, and at UNC Chapel Hill, over $220,000. Their price probably went up after the basketball championship this year. These programs, they've saved families thousands while providing quality university transferable education for our children. The establishment of both the Alexander Furniture Academy and our new welding program are the key parts of Dr. Henshaw's vision for us to offer training for the high demands needed in our business community and the related skills. For CVCC to achieve our goals, we need to have a very strong partners, and we couldn't ask for a better partner than Alexander County. The Furniture Academy started offering classes in the summer of 2016, but the hard work of creating it started long before that. The Furniture Academy is unique because it is industry-driven, training program designed by local furniture manufacturers, and CVCC to prepare students for the skilled positions in sewing and upholstery that are in high demand for many of our community's largest employers. As many of you know, the classes are taught by expert craftspeople from our partners, and they've done an outstanding job of training our students. Our partners have given so much to the program, including assistance with the curriculum, layout of the simulated furniture lab, and donations for scholarships. In the past 12 months, the academy has trained 49 students, and our third Furniture Academy class will start on June 20. We are also happy to say that 100% of the graduates... We are also happy to say that 100% of the graduates of this program are employed now. Our Furniture Academy founding partners are Craftmaster, Mitchell Gold and Bob Williams, King K Lazy Boy. Additional partners include American Home Furnishings Alliance, Hancock and Moore, Huntington House, Palatin Industries, and Taylor King Furniture. We're also very excited about our new welding program and see a very bright future for it as well. We offered a few classes during the fall and spring semesters, and we're now offering seven classes this summer with an average enrollment of 11 students each. There are 17 new students taking class in this summer, which is very exciting. In April, we hosted the Skills USA State Welding Fabrication Competition in our new welding facility here on the hill. This is the first time CVCC has ever hosted a Skills USA State Competition, and we were very happy to do it here in Alexander County. We received rave reviews for having one of the best welding facilities in the state. And just a side note, uh, CVCC, uh, this year won 20 state championships, the Skills USA competition, and I think 15 second place. And this is a state record for any higher ed institution. So we're confident both the Furniture Academy and our welding program will serve as models for other communities to follow in the future. One example, uh, we've been invited to present at the American Home Furnishings Alliance Conference at the World Congress Center in Atlanta, Georgia later this week. And we'll be talking about Alexander County and the Furniture Academy there. Um, we've been told to expect about 1,000, um, 1,000 in the audience for that presentation. We look forward to seeing the great things our students are doing in their careers and the impact, uh, they will have on the community. Um, so I'd like to thank the board very much for your support of CVCC and the programs that we've worked to put together. And we continue to see that a great partnership as we grow the programs here. I'd also, just on a personal note, like to take just a moment. You recognized Linda Graham earlier, but I would also like to thank her for her great leadership in guiding Alexander Center over the, uh, over the past nine years. Um, I, I left the college working in a family business for a couple of years. And when I came back, Linda was one of the first people to welcome me back and did so graciously as she has a habit of doing. I didn't know who she was at the time. And I thought, "Who is that lady?", but she's really nice. So, so I've had, I've had really the, uh, pleasure of working with her. Uh, she's retiring and, and going to do other things, but I know she's going to continue to be a positive force in our community. So I just, uh, wanted to personally thank her for her work and giving me the opportunity to work with her and to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey.
Have any questions for Dr. Mackey?
Uh, no, I, I want to say something. I, I knew Linda was going to be speaking later, so, uh, I just wanted to tell you personally what a great job you've done, and we're going to miss you. And if, if your replacement is just half as good and has half the energy that you do, uh, we're going to be okay. So, uh, we do appreciate everything you've done. And I know Linda and I have worked very, very closely together over these last, uh, eight and a half years that I've been on the board. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to miss you. I guess retirement just means that you're going to have more time to spend on boards and committees and, and things that we need you on.
There you go. There's a thought for you.
And, and this, this center up here, um, there's so many people involved that had a hand in, in making that Applied Technology Center happen. Uh, but Linda is, is one of the main people, and, uh, we do appreciate it. And Alexander County wants to thank you for that, too.
Thank you so much. All of you.
Question about the welding, Dr. Mackey, if I could. Um, I'm the proud owner of a trailer that the CTE department built for me this year. Uh, all the welds are student-done. We'll walk through the, the welding facility up here. It's absolutely amazing. And the opportunities there are just, sky's the limit. What type of, i- is that, is that going to be a potential articulated piece with the welding students at the high school to come over, kind of like the cohort pieces are? I mean, is that, is that in the mix?
Yes, it is. We, we have to have pathways for all the, um, high school students who want to take college, have to have a college pathway. And we have those built for welding, so it will be, yes.
Yeah, some of those boys that welded on my trailer, they're probably the furthest stop from their mind may be college. But if they, if their access to college is through something that they love and are successful at, then, you know, that's going to create and inspire them hopefully to, to want to do some things.
Absolutely. Hope so.
Did you say there are 11 per class of the welding class? And we're going to have 77 welders? What's the average? You might know the average starting ways of welding. I know it's good.
I was going to say welders make really good money.
Which I think is a great opportunity for someone.
15 to 18, starting.
Uh, I, I do have a question for, uh, Dr. Mackey. What, what are we looking at as far as expansion of curriculum there? What, what do you think the next thing will be?
Uh, welding, um, and metallurgy will be, of course, the expansion. And we're expans- expanding the, uh, course transfer degrees through the cohorts and so forth. So our goal is to, of course, eventually have full degree programs offered right here in the county without students having to cross the river to Catawba to do that. So, um, we will be, um, uh, building facilities are available and equipment and so forth. We're, we're looking to build those programs into full-fledged two-year programs.
Can I add one more thing about currently the Furniture Academy? This is their first night of a two-week sale. So, um, we encourage our citizens to go take advantage of locally-made furniture at great prices.
Now, I, I will say something. I bought a chair from up there, I don't know, back in the fall. And it is a great piece of furniture. It is very sturdy. If you've got young kids like I do, and they're jumping on the couches and the chairs and everything else, it, it's, it's well-made furniture. Well-made.
What time of day does that sale run?
5:30 to 7:30, Monday through Thursday.
5:30 to 7:30, Monday through Thursday. Do you, do they take?
If we get a hurry, we could get there.
They take checks, cash.
No credit cards?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the prices, the prices are out extraordinary.
I bought two chairs there, too.
Yeah.
This chair would, I mean, if you bought it retail, I'm guessing it would be $1,000. I think I paid 75 or 100 for it, so.
Great prices.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
33 minutes to get the furniture set. We've got 33 minutes to get the furniture set. We need to pick it up.
Okay, at this time, we'll go into our, um, an entertaining motion for our next public hearing, the 2017-2018 Alexander County Proposed Budget.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into public. Oh.
Nothing, nothing.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I again make a motion that we open the public hearing pertaining to the 2017-2018 fiscal year Alexander County budget.
Okay, we have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, any discussion about the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the proposed general fund budget for Alexander County for fiscal year 2017-2018 totals $38,900,000. There are no proposed tax increases. Uh, the original 2016-2017 budget totaled $38,284,170. Uh, and the revised 2016-2017 budget, which is after budget amendments to date, totals, uh, $39,522,000. The 2015-2016 budget for the general fund totaled $38,867,686. Um, there are, there is one fee, uh, change. We reported last that there wasn't, but the building advisory committee met and is recommending to the county commissioners that they increase inspection fees. The increase would be as follows. All trade permits would increase from $65 to $70. The minimum fee for any inspection would increase from $65 to $70. And the fees for building plans would increase from 21 cents per square foot to 25 cents per square foot. And these fee, it was recommended that these fee, these fee increases would go into effect July 1st of, um, this year. Also, water, um, we had talked about that, um, a couple of weeks ago. City of Hickory is proposing a 1.7% increase in water rates for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, and I'd like to point out that the city of Hickory, their city council, may not, not approve the full 1.7, so it could be less than that. Uh, that's happened several times. Also, uh, water taps will continue at the inside rates for the upcoming fiscal year. So that means that water tap fees will continue on to June 30th, 2018, at the same rates. Um, so at this time, I have some, um, slides I'd like to share.
Mr. French, can I add one comment about the building services changes?
Yes, sir.
I'm on the Building Services Advisory, uh, Board, and, uh, the, uh, Board voted unanimously to change the fees. And I know Josh is probably wondering what, what those changes are. But we're eliminating a line item, um, and increasing the other charges. And so we think for the average house, it's going to be pretty much about the same. But we had to eliminate that one line item charge because, uh, it was no longer allowed under state statutes.
Yeah, assuming those fees were compared to surrounding counties, that we're kind of in the same ballpark.
Some are a little lower, some are a little higher.
Got you.
Uh, you have a slide here, 2017-2018 Proposed Budget General Fund Revenues, Basically showing that 51% of our revenue, um, comes from property taxes. The second largest would be sales taxes at 20% and so on. Um, any questions about that slide? I'm just going to go through these. Got about 15 or 16 of those I can. Okay, next, next slide. 2017-2018 Proposed Budget General Fund Expenditures. Um, this is, uh, shows you public safety at 27%. Human services at 27%. Education at 16%. General government at 16%. Um, and again, I'd be glad to answer any questions about, that's by groups.
Mr. Chairman, would you just define for everyone what it, what all is included in human services as well as?
We have a slide that shows that.
Okay, good.
Okay. Next slide. This is the human service expenditures. Um, the health department, uh, DSS at 71%. The health department at 23% and so on. This is the breakdown. The proposed, uh, budget for human service expenditures is $10,711,000. And so that's, so it gives you a breakdown. Okay, any questions on that slide? Okay, the next slide. The proposed, uh, this is for debt service expenditures. Most of the debt is divided between the school system and detention center, both at 48%, and some other county buildings at 4%. And that's total is $1,782,000 for our debt service. Any questions?
I'm going to ask a question I know the answer to, but I just want you to answer it. Uh, why, some people are, you know, listening or watching on TV, why, why, uh, why do we have 48% of the school system? Why is 48% of that school system debt?
The debt just runs through the county books, that's all.
I know, I know that. But I mean, can you explain to people why that debt is on county government and not on the school system?
It's, I mean, it's the way the state system's set up so that it goes through county government.
It flows through.
Yes.
Okay.
The school system pays for it. We just, it just runs through us.
I know that.
Okay. Next slide?
It's a pass-through.
It is. The next, uh, slide shows the school's current expense, which is 99% and CVCC, Alexander Center, 1%. That's for, um, $6,112,000. Uh, this does not include the $150,000 auditorium payment. Uh, there's still debt service on the auditorium, but, uh, Alexander County has, uh, fulfilled its obligation, which was $2 million.
How much longer is that debt service till it's paid in for? Is it 2019?
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure. But not, it's not much longer, I know. Okay. Next slide. Um, public safety expenditures and public safety, $10,332,223. Uh, EMS is at 30%. Sheriff's Department, 27. Detention, 23. Um, and so on. Plan and inspections is actually considered as 5%. Fire emergency management is at 4%. 911 communications is at 8%. Any questions about that? Okay, the next, um, slides show tax rates and information related to tax rates. Uh, we saw a similar slide last year. Um, proposed tax rates for 2017-2018. Davie County at 72.8, Alexander County at 79. Scotland County's tax rate is $1.02. Uh, and, uh, Yacken, they're going through revaluation, is at 66 cents. Any questions? Next slide. Uh, revenue generated by one cent on a property tax rate at 100% collection comparison to counties similar in size. A penny in Scotland County generates $180,000. A penny in Alexander County, uh, generates $259,000. A penny in Yacken before their revale, uh, generates $261,000. Davie County, $427,000. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next slide, please. Uh, the proposed tax rate, uh, comparison for surrounding counties. Um, Iredell County is 52.75. Um, Catawba, 57.5. Caldwell, 63 cents. Wilks, 67. Burke, 69.5, 69 and a half cents. And Alexander, 79.
Mr. French, would you maybe comment on why you think, for instance, Catawba and Iredell is lower? I mean, I think we all know the answer, but like the...
Well, that's actually on the next slide. We can show you the values are so much greater in those two counties. Um, can we show the next slide? Okay. The next slide, uh, answers that question. The revenue generated by one cent on the property tax rate by surrounding counties. Alexander County, a penny, 259,000. Wilks, 536,000. Caldwell, 600,000. Burke, 630,000. In Catawba County, a penny on the tax rate, property tax rate generates $1.6 million. And in Iredell County, a penny on the tax rate generates $2,198,000, almost $2.2 million. It'd take a lot of pennies of Alexander County to equal one penny in the other county.
As well as those, those areas, several of those areas have strong retail sales, too.
I, I was going to say, and you could probably follow that down as the, the, Iredell's probably the top, uh, revenue getter in sales tax, followed by Catawba, then Burke, Caldwell, Wilks, and so on.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I, one cool thing about cell phones is they all have a calculator on them. And I was just, you know, comparing us, comparing us to Catawba County, um, we would have to generate the amount of money that Catawba County generates with one penny change in their tax rate, we would have to change our tax rate 6.18 cents per hundred. And obviously, Iredell is a significantly larger number than that. And I'm, you know, doing pretty basic math, even Caldwell County is over two times Alexander's. Because two cents in Alexander property tax is going to generate, uh, what? $518,000, which is less than one penny in Wilks. Significantly less than one penny in Caldwell. Even more significantly less. So this isn't anything new, folks. Um, this is what we... This is what we in Alexander County get to, um, get to fight and try to deal with.
And in conjunction with the tax rate, the sales taxes for those counties are just so much more, greater than...
With a diverse stream of revenue than we do.
Yes. Okay, the next slide. Okay, the next slide. This shows the fund balances compared to population group average. And we're in the group counties with twenty-five to forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine population. In two thousand twelve, the Alexander County had twenty-nine point four-nine percent fund balance. The population group average was twenty-seven point two-five. Two thousand thirteen, we had twenty-four point oh-four percent fund balance. And the population average was twenty-seven point seven-one. Two thousand fourteen, the fund balance dropped to nineteen point two-four percent. And the population group average was thirty point three, eight percent or thirty-three percent. And in two thousand fifteen, the fund balance was seventeen point six zero percent. And the population group average was thirty-one point one-nine percent. Can you see a trend? Last year, after the tax increase, the fund balance increased significantly from seventeen point six to twenty-eight point three-five. Our group average is thirty-two point two-three percent, so it got us more in line. So just, I don't know if there's any questions about that. But I know that's something the commissioners have talked about, getting us in a healthy fund balance. And we certainly have made great steps in doing that.
What obstacles do you have when your fund balance isn't sufficient? What does it prevent you from doing?
Well, if you want to borrow money, or if you, it will help you there. It sounds odd, but when you have money, you can borrow money more easily. The process that you go through with the LGC, I won't say it's easy, but never easy, but it certainly, certainly helps our financial position. Plus, you'll be in a better position for grants or that are out there. It puts you in a better position for those kinds of things. Okay, next slide. I think there's one more. This is the June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, fund balance comparison to counties similar in size. Scotland County has twenty-three point, or had twenty-three point six-eight percent fund balance. Davie, twenty-seven point four-five percent fund balance. Alexander, twenty-eight point three-five percent fund balance. Yatkin, twenty-eight point six-four percent fund balance. And the population group average was thirty-two point two-three percent. And again, that just shows you that counties need to be in a good, strong financial position. And counties around us are addressing those things. I think this is the last slide. This shows the proposed tax rate, the current tax rate, and how the pennies, seventy-nine cents, is allocated or distributed. If you look at from low to high, two cents health, four cents for the debt, including detention, seven cents EMS, ten cents for other, and other includes a number of smaller departments, pre-trial release, emergency management, forest replanning inspections, veterans, senior center, library, Rocky Face Park, recreation, economic development, cooperative extension. DSS, twelve cents sheriff, detention and nine-one-one since they're together, twenty-one cents in schools, twenty-three percent, twenty-three cents. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about that.
We just talked about that economic development spending, that that one fifty was not in the budget. And if I heard you correctly, our amended budget for this year ending June thirtieth was thirty-nine, five. Is that correct, thirty-nine, I mean?
Our amended...
After the adjustments?
Yes, yes.
One question I would have, I guess, in budgeting, always like flexibility. And where we are positioned now, thirty-eight, nine, we're, and we're spinning, in essence, or looking at thirty-nine, five. Could we build a contingency? Or what does that entail? And how can you build guardrails around that so that you don't have so many budget amendments? Is that possible?
It, it is. You know, you will still have some budget amendments, but, but to add contingency gives you a lot more flexibility within the budgeting. So if...
If you have an unforeseen event or something catastrophic happens to any, or a number of our departments, where there's maybe a little bit of challenge.
That's correct. And the, if you have contingency, then you have, like you're saying, something happens. But if there's a project that you're, that you're doing, that you have a little, need a little bit more money for, you've already got that built into the budget, so you don't have to go outside that in fund balance. And we, even though we budget fund balance for the last couple of years, we haven't really gotten into fund balance.
Yeah.
So...
That's just...
I guess you're asking, Chairman Campbell's asking, how do we eliminate budget amendments?
You can't.
How can we eliminate some of them?
You can eliminate some of them, but you'll always have, because there'll be state...
Yeah.
The state will have DSS or health department, they'll have certain programs, and they'll have to expand, extend funding for, which will extend the program. So you'll have to do budget amendments for those kinds of things. There'll always be some budget amendments. And we have fewer than we've had, had at one time. So, but that would help narrow it down some by having greater fund balance.
But to me, you try not to paint yourself in a box, you know, that you build, I mean, you build a little flexibility in there for the...
Right.
Unexpected events. And I think the way we've added to fund balance, and I think we're tracking pretty well again this year.
We are.
You know, that's going to be a very respectable number. So I think we've been prudent. So, just a thought.
Yes.
Along that line of fund balance, I'd like to say, you know, you can tell by looking at the graph, we're no longer trailing the bottom of the pack. You know, we're trying to, to move up to where, you know, things are better with our economy. And I think, too, that, wouldn't you say, Mr. French, played maybe some type of a part in the business that came in. Borealis, they were looking at, you know, how we're managing our money and, you know, how we're doing it. So, you know, we're trying to be as wise as we can.
Certainly.
I'll say one thing, one reason it's important to have a good fund balance, people may not realize. You've got weekly, monthly, and quarterly expenditures that have to come out of the county checking account. Money doesn't come in on a regular basis. It's up and down. You know, sometimes you've got sales tax, the, the sales tax money comes in three months later than when it's actually purchased at the stores. So, three months after Christmas is always a lot of sales tax money coming in. But when you get on into other months, that kind of trails off. So it's good to have a, a healthy fund balance so that from month to month, the county can pay its obligations and not worry about, hey, are we, are we not going to be able to pay this bill and put it off? Or are we not going to be able to purchase this ambulance that was, you know, trashed or something? You know, so it's, it's good to have a fund balance so that as, as we do personally, you know, it's, it's good to have a little cushion in your checking account, so.
And Commissioner Mayberry, that's a very good point. And also, as it relates to grants, with the, we've been talking tonight about the Applied Technology Center. And there was a two, almost two and a half million dollar EDA grant. We, you know, those funds run six months behind. And so, but we still have to pay our bills. And so with a healthy fund balance, like you're stating, if you have a fund balance, you can pay that, and then you'll be reimbursed at a later time, just puts you in so much better position to do things like that.
Well, you never know what you might have. And your, healthy fund balance is a really good thing. But it's like your personal savings account and your personal checking account. They, a lot of similarities between the two. That checking account is for your recurring expenses and your month-to-month bills. And, and that's our, you know, our current expenses. But then, your personal savings account is like our fund balance. And you don't want to strap yourself with recurring expenses out of your fund balance because that money's not intended to, you know, that, that's, that's big type money that's not for those recurring expenses. And when you, you know, if you can't pay for those kind of recurring things out of your general fund, then you need to find ways to pay it otherwise. So having that healthy fund balance is a really good thing, and it saves us. And it enables us to function in a lot of ways. And with wise and prudent expenditures and use of that, it's a tremendous tool that we have. It allows us to leverage a lot of things. And obviously, we don't ever want to get in a position where we're paying those recurring expenses out of that kind of money.
I don't believe any, any of the recurring expenses are paid out of fund balance. Am I correct on that? I mean, none of those budget ordinance amendments last year were any kind of recurring experience?
That's correct.
And I think, you know, unfortunately, when we had to have the tax rate increase, quite frankly, I thought part of that was to stabilize the fund balance and get us in a better financial position. Although painful and for citizens, I mean, anybody that owns real estate, it wasn't a fun day. And continues to not be a fun day. But the reality of it is, we could not have continued on our same, same path and continued to deteriorate our fund balance at some point.
That's correct, yes, sir.
You just have to pull the trigger and do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so obviously, if there's any comments from the audience. Yes, ma'am, would you like to come up and introduce yourself, please?
My name's Michelle Zirkel, and I've never done this before. My question may be totally off key. But talking about finding other ways to come up with maybe buffer monies, I was just wondering, do we have any county-owned property or empty buildings in Alexander County that are not being used to their full potential?
Yes, I think we have old Ellendale Head Start Building is empty.
But that was, that's not a county building.
It's not county-owned property.
Right, because there's no debt on it at this time, correct?
That's owned by the school system.
Right.
Sure.
What I'm trying to, to say is, are there any buildings that would be available for sale or use in any way to bring some more money to? I'm sure this has been something that's been discussed before, but I just wanted to bring it up.
You know, I certainly think there could be buildings for sale. The question is, is there a buyer for them? I think that's, you know, school, unfortunately, for example, in that case, is kind of a limited-use facility. It's, it's not like, like that shell building that was just an empty shell that you could make it into whatever. You know, I think that's always the question, is the marketability of something like that.
Is that the only building that...
That, well, we're confusing something. The, that building, the old Wittenburg Elementary School, those are owned by the Alexander County school system. We can't put those up for sale. They don't go into the county budget if they were sold.
So if the school system needed to get money, would they be able to do something with that?
You would have to ask the school system and the school board that question. Now, as far as Alexander County-owned property that's owned by the county government, we really don't have any buildings that are not being used or in the process of getting ready to be used. The bank building that we just bought in Taylorsville, we're in the process of moving some county offices to, to that particular building, so.
Then those other spaces will be the spaces you're moving from?
They're already...
Some of those are leased, some of those are leased spaces. Some, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. French, but it's my understanding, as long as there is a debt on a school facility, because the debt has to be in the name of the county, we have to be the borrower. But once the debt is retired, then our interest is conveyed to the school system once they're debt-free, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else, please feel free. Yes, Larry, come on up and introduce yourself, even though you probably need no introduction.
Larry Riddle. I've often thought about this, because I am, as one minister said here about a year ago, I'm not a native, so I'm only passing through. As I drive around our county, and I, I'm not picking on them, but I think there's others. I see a lot of empty single-wide and a few double-wide trailers. And my, I have a couple of questions about that. If a empty trailer's been sitting there for years, has the tax rate increased on it like it would on a regular home?
Depends on revaluation.
Okay, let me go at it a different way. I'm betting that it doesn't. I'm betting that it probably stays as a piece of property, period. And it does not increase in value other than maybe the land itself. I would offer a suggestion, and I've seen done in another area. But any of those buildings that are for residential occupation, if they're empty over a two-year period, they are either removed from the site or there's a two hundred dollar a year charge made to each one of those. That goes into your tax rolls. That increases your income. I think that's well worth looking into. Maybe you can't do anything, I don't know. But it just seems to me that that's why they're sitting there. There is no penalty for them not to be sitting there. Just a suggestion.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Here is no one. Oh, you got, okay, I'm sorry. Come on up, Trish. Yes, please come up.
I just wanted to first apologize for not being here at prior budget meetings. I was sort of under the impression that I didn't need to be here, and I won't do that again. You have the letter that I, I submitted as part of our budget. And I just wanted to offer myself up for any questions or concerns you had about our budget, because it is a pretty huge increase over last year's. And, and we did take that very seriously when we developed our budget. And after submitting our DSS budget that our DSS board had approved, my budget officer and myself went back through it, and we were able to find, while not a huge amount, we did make an additional about thirty-five thousand dollars in cuts of things that we thought we could do without. So I just wanted to put that before you and let you know that we did take our request very seriously. And overall, the, the bulk of our budget is related to the foster children that we have in care. And unfortunately, the need for foster care continues to increase because of primarily substance abuse and neglect in our county. So I just wanted to put that out there and know that our employees are working really hard on behalf of the citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any?
Any questions, gentlemen? Anybody have a question?
I, I have one question.
Sure.
Do we, I'm very familiar with the foster program. Not as familiar in Alexander County as I am in Caldwell, because since I'm a county commissioner, I can't be, my wife and I can't be licensed foster parents in Alexander County. But, um, one, one issue that has kind of been brought to my attention that I think is not, and I'm not pointing a finger directly at DSS, because there is a court system involved as well. But my question is, and I may be completely, my information may be incorrect. And if so, please let me, please tell me. But what I understand is there are situations where foster children, whose cases have not been, I don't want to say finalized, but they're, they're playing, they're playing, whether it is reunification with their parents, or adoption, or whatever. If it's, if that plan is not determined in a certain amount of time, then the state, the state no longer fund, no longer reimburses the county for that child.
Yes, the funding does reduce or eliminate when that happens.
Okay.
And so it's really important that through the courts, that the cases move as quickly as they can. And there have been a few situations throughout the years where that couldn't happen due to, whether it's a judge or DSS, sometimes it's a combination. But typically, it does not happen.
Well, and, and my, I mean, my question was, if with that being the case, we have no authority whatsoever over the judicial system...
we have no authority whatsoever over the judicial system, which is one of the other branches of our three-branch government. But, you know, I'm, I'm aware of several instances where, I would say court is less than efficient. You know, where judges are talking about coconut cake and Christmas presents and things. Instead, I should, but, but anyway.
Yes.
But if there, I guess my, what I'm saying is, the cost of a foster child, which includes, which includes a small room and board monthly fee plus Medicaid, and all of the, all the expenses that come along, go along with Medicaid, we just need to do our best not to have situations where we don't receive the reimbursement from the state
Agreed.
for those children.
Let me just speak to that. Judge Graham is not here, I think he left. But we have had meetings with Judge Graham since I've been in the county, and he's committed to working through any issues. So I will tell you that we've had meetings. And I only know of one case where the time limit has gone beyond in this county, and that was rectified. So I do believe that he's aware, and we're trying to make the judges aware. But you're right, we don't have a lot of control.
And let me say this, I did, Judge Graham is not the judge that I was
No, but let me, he is...
that I was mentioning.
No, but he is sort of the over, over judge.
But what I understand is Judge, yeah.
Yes, he, I call him the over judge, but the, exactly.
He is essentially the, the lead, the leader of the pack.
And he does a good job of helping
And I think very highly of...
respond to our concerns. And I have been very vocal when there are issues. So believe me, I go to court, my staff, my supervisors go to court. And we do try to keep that at the forefront. So I hear you, we're concerned about that.
And the only, and the only other thing I would say, foster, foster children, what I understand, they're over 70 in Alexander County right now.
We have 73 right now.
Okay. And this is just, hopefully, this will help with some of the... But if there are things that DSS needs to provide these children, I think the public at large would be very open to helping with some of these things because I'm not in favor of everything that DSS, all of the services that DSS necessarily has to provide to as many people as it has provided to. But foster children don't have a choice. And so I think if we make the public aware of some of the needs that DSS is trying to fill for these children, especially churches and whatnot, it would take a little of the pressure off of...
And the DAV does an annual Christmas in July for our kids, and they provide back-to-school clothing, and so they get them ready for school. And then we usually have a lot of citizens that step up at Christmas time. We put the children on the angel tree. A lot of businesses donate things. So we, we have several times of the year where we do major outreach for things. And then throughout the year, we have a fund called Cairns Kids in honor of a late DSS director. And we continue to get donations in on that. So we're always, as you say, trying to find other ways to provide for these kids.
Can you, and I'm not going to ask you to give us this information tonight, but could you send us a, just a list of how many kids were in foster care over the last 10 years? You know, average?
I think I can get that.
I know that changes month to month, but just, you know, I'd like to see, because I know the number is going up.
It has. When I walked in the door, we had 58 kids in care. And so just in a year and a half, we've gone. Burke County has over 250 kids. Caldwell has over 250. And granted, they are bigger than us, but they also have way more kids. And it's a statewide trend, unfortunately.
And it's, a lot of it related to opioid addiction.
Drug and neglect, and, yeah. Drugs particularly.
Yep.
Any other questions, Jim? Thank you very much.
Thank you, and please don't hesitate to call me.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. Okay, moving on to board appointments and reappointments. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Western Piedmont Council of Government Region E Aging Committee reappoint Margot Mosley and Paulette Huffman for two years. DSS Board reappoint Jeff Peel three years. CBCC Board of Trustees reappoint John Watts for four years.
Okay, Jim, you have the recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, make a motion that we approve the county committee and/or board appointments. A second, that motion.
Okay, have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion?
These are some darn good people, except for that DSS, Jeff Peel thing. Yeah.
All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. Okay. Mr. French, Budget Ordinance Amendments 42 through 44, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment 42, increase library budget for state grant funding in excess of original estimates. Increase the tax office budget for estimates of May through June NC DOT fees to be charged to the county for the collection of motor vehicle taxes through the Tax and Tag Together system. Budget Amendment Number 43 is to budget for payouts, vacation, holiday, and comp time for sheriff's office employees retiring during 2016, 2017. And Budget Amendment Number 44 is to budget for state shared revenue distributions received that were greater than original budget estimates, and that's in the landfill budget.
Gentlemen, you've got the budget amendments.
I move to approve Budget Ordinance Amendments Number 42, 43, and 44 as stated.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion about the motion?
I want to mention one thing, and this goes back to the budget because we were talking about Budget Ordinance Amendments and how to keep those between the rails. So, a lot of times, well, let's, let's get back our, our original budget last year, I think was $38,600,000. And we ended up at, what, $39,500,000? So, take the Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 42, for example. This is coming in as revenue, but it all shows, also shows up on the expense side. So not only is our revenue going up, but our, what's showing that what we spent is going up as well. So even though it's a grant, it's a grant. A lot of that $600,000 in extra spending was, you know, other money coming in. Not all of it, of course, but some of it was. So just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
And I think Budget Amendment 44 would be one we would continue even if we put a contingency because when somebody retires and has accrued.
Correct. Any other discussion?
Just the tax office piece there. Can, Mr. French, can you?
That's just our fee for the Tax and Tag, that program. We get, it's, every couple of months, we get a, based on the number of motor vehicles. That's what that is.
You get a check coming in? Or is that?
It's a, no, it's, we have to pay, that's what we end up having to pay.
That's the expense going out, okay.
So that's in addition to what we feel like we have that agency being in.
We're already, we're collecting the money, so that's, we have to pay, that's something we have to pay to the state.
You get, you get revenues coming in, but you gotta pay that out to the state.
Gotta settle back up to the state, basically.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, all those in favor of the motions, the budget amendments, please raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise.
Hey, Mr. French, County Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to mention. One is, our next meeting is June 19th, 2017. A couple of other things that are, I know we've been mentioning, but they'll be here before we know it. Free concert is being offered on Sunday, July 2nd, 2017, at 2:00 PM at the Alexander Central High School Auditorium. This is the 44, 40th, 440th North Carolina Army National Guard Band will provide the entertainment, and it's a free concert. On July the 8th, there'll be an Independence Day celebration, and that'll be, that's on Saturday, July 8th, at ACHS. Activities include live music, food, and children's activities, and it will begin at 6:00 PM. Fireworks will start at approximately 10:00 PM. So just want to mention those things. I have some things for closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. At this time, I entertain a motion going to close session. North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11845 and 6, Economic Development Contractual Personnel. And we will reconvene only to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. Okay.